The problem with ours was, uh, the first six tents of the road. To me, most of them were. So that year pounded in the morning, it's probably thirty or forty. And that was when all the roads all backed down. Now we're gonna have to send you a single bus again.
Uh, suddenly it's just, we're a while down the road yesterday, well, they dropped the kids out. It was, it was no school. And my daughter-in-law backed down. But she, when she backed over, like you see, it just backed down. When she got to our place, she was gonna drive in. There was no clothes in there. He had a thing that high, just solid slot that he, she just stopped driving through that. And she let the kids walk in. And he'd be hanging. Last night, I guess they shoveled off. They put Houston at Ice Ridge out there. I, this is Houston up in the summer. They did want me on there with the Bobcats, right around. So I guess they gotta shovel off last night. So I was all out of here.
Good evening, everyone. I will call the meeting to order, please. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start with a roll call. Uh, first off, uh, Jason Wienerman and Jason Cron are not with us this evening. I'm Sean Blackburn. I represent District Two. I'll be serving as Chair this evening in Jason Cron's place. Uh, in addition to that, let's start with you, Ken.
I am here representing District Four.
Mike?
I am Mike Pearl, District Five.
Rich?
Uh, Rich Blinkish. I'm a member-at-large.
And Jeff Bertram.
Jeff Bertram, Member-at-large.
Uh, and the ex-officio, uh, County Commissioner Joe Persky is not here with us either this evening?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just jump right in then with, uh, number one on our agenda. This, uh, agenda number one is, uh, an applicant from Nathan and John Ameser. It's a request to reconsider, uh, to consider rezoning approximately eighteen acres from the commercial zoning district to the Ag forty zoning district in accordance with Section four point one zero of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance four thirty-nine. Uh, the applicant's also in the business on the adjacent property. The purpose of the rezoning is to match a zoning district with the current land use. A portion of the property would remain zone commercial due to the existing billboard. Are the applicants with us here?
You gotta refresh your list.
Okay. Let's, uh, start with the, uh, staff report, please.
All right. Um, I believe the applicant is online. We're just getting him connected yet. Um, so this is rezoning eighteen acres from commercial to A forty. Um, this property was, so when Messers bought it, they did a annexation and detachment and reconfigured what some of this land was in, um, the city of Sock Center, what land was in Sock Center Township to line up with I ninety-four. Um, so this is part of the property they bought. Um, and now they want to rezone it so it matches the current use, which is agricultural. Um, there is a billboard on part of the property, so that portion is gonna stay commercial. Um, so that billboard use remains conforming with the zoning district. Um, so that's why the whole parcel isn't being rezoned to, uh, to agriculture forty. There's no setback impacts with this request. The surrounding zoning is A forty municipality, commercial and agriculture eighty. Um, this will just be allowed the one existing residential dwelling. So that will become a conforming use now rather than a legal nonconformity with the home in the commercial district. That'll be con, be conforming now. Um, the lease to score was seventy point seven. Sock Center Township did recommend approval of the rezoning. Um, and that is about all I have here.
All righty, thank you. Uh, quick survey of the members who visited the site. Ken?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
I did. Jeff?
Yes.
And who was down at the end there? Rich?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, okay, do we have the applicants yet?
Mr. Chair, Angie Berg with Environmental Services. Uh, the applicants are online. Nathan Messer. Nathan, if you can hear us, go ahead.
I think he's muted.
Hear me now?
Oh.
There was something.
Yeah, we heard you a little bit.
Having a little trouble because it's echoing. I must've got in twice or something. It's, uh, there's echoing with like a thirty-second delay. But I'm here and I can hear you.
All right, was there anything that you wanted to add to the, uh, report?
Um, nothing I, other than I think it was described well. I learned since I applied for this, um, I talked to the company that leases the billboards and they were questioning as to, it's really hard with an echo here. The, they had some concerns about those other billboards not being on a commercial property and the ability to rebuild them if something were to happen.
Nathan, are you listening to this on the webcast? Wondering if that's why you're getting an echo.
It's a WebEx. Uh, yes, I am. I should probably be using the phone.
Well, if you're just on the WebEx, you don't have it up on anything else.
Right, I'm just on the WebEx.
That should be fine. I'm muted. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, was there, uh, was there any response to the questions he had about the billboards or anything?
Well, those, the existing billboards are all legal nonconformities, so they're gonna fall under the, um, there's rules for legally nonconforming billboards. So they're allowed to be there and be replaced as is, even if they're not zoned commercial.
All righty. Um, Commissioners, uh, any questions for the applicant? Environmental Services, no? Uh, this is a open public hearing, and if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this issue, please come forward.
Chairman, uh, it might be helpful if staff introduces themselves too, and then Heidi, did you do a site visit?
Oh, yes. I, Heidi Wenskowski, Environmental Services, and yeah, I did do a site visit out here.
Thank you. And, uh, please go ahead, um...
Uh, yes, Angie Berg, Stearns County Environmental Services, and I'd also like to let you know that we have Dick Deal Hansen from our IS, our IT department here and Dustin, they're here learning and understanding the control room so that they're not just random people walking around. And then, um, I'll let Brenda say hello too. Brenda Schifler, Schindler, um, is our new office specialist in, in working with Deb in training. So, you wanna add anything?
Nope, hello.
Okay, so, so she, Brenda's gonna help me kind of document some things throughout the meeting and work on meeting minutes and is working with Deb on the packet, so you'll, she'll be a familiar face.
All righty.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, was there some correspondence, uh, pertaining to this agenda item?
Um, nothing received.
All righty. Um, motion on the public hearing?
I'll second it.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, further discussion of any kind? Seems pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Okay. Let's go right from there to the finding of facts then. Uh, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
I think it is, Mr. Chairman. The, um, commercial, all around it, it's the, uh, commercial district development options allowed without rezoning and then the commercial zoning district purpose statement. It fits with the nature of the...
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Uh, how many applicable sections, please?
Mr. Chairman, I think it does, under the agricultural goal of supporting agriculture as a desirable land use for long-term and facilitate the class of diversification of the economy. And, uh, number three, retain areas with highly valued agricultural land or economically viable animal agricultural operations.
Jeff, your mic.
I'll never get used to this. I get scolded when I don't and I get scolded when I do, so I guess I'm just gonna leave it on and see what rolls.
All right, thank you.
Should I say that again?
Uh...
I'd rather not. I think they heard me.
I think we're good. Uh, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Uh, yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
And number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? I don't think there's been any kind of issues, uh, so far. He's going by the rules, so we'll move on. Um, are there issues pertinent to this matter? Anything, uh, township or city input?
County, township approved it.
Thank you. Uh, federal, state, or local permits involved?
No.
Environmental concerns?
No.
Uh, yeah, anything about impact to property values, public health, safety, or traffic generation? None of these things. All righty. I would expect a, a motion then, please.
I move to approve. I'll second.
Richard has made a, a motion to approve. Mike has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And that would be for the Ja- January third county board meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number two. Uh, number two is, uh, requesting a conditional use permit to include properties to Riverside Resort in the residential R-one zoning district. The request is in accordance with Sections four point eight, nine point nine, and ten point two point six C of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance four thirty-nine. Uh, the properties requested to be included in the resort are currently permitted and licensed as vacation short-term rentals. Instead of operating as a vacation short-term rental, the cabins would be permitted and licensed as resort cabins. Adding these properties to the resort will nullify the existing interim use permit. Uh, let's see here. Roll call. Those who have made it there to the site? Ken?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
I was there. Jeff?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes.
All righty. Let's go ahead with the staff report then. Heidi?
All right, so this is just adding, um, three rental properties into Riverside Resort and licensing them and permitting them as part of the resort, uh, as part of the resort that would separate.
Sorry.
Actually, Heidi, can you please, um, start over? I, I did have to help, uh, do the minutes the last couple of months and it's impossible. Like, Rich, I can never hear you. I basically had to say inaudible. So, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
How did that feel, Heidi? I just wanna know. It's not just me, is it?
We all screw up and we all forget the mic.
Yeah, um...
All right, so this request is to add three existing rental properties into Riverside Resort. Um, these properties are currently vacation home rentals, licensed and permitted. Um, we've had no complaints on these properties, uh, for the ease of licensing in the future and permitting. They wanna add these into the resort and just include it all on one license. So that's basically what they're doing. Um, septic systems have all been certified. Um, the only condition we have is that licensing shall be in compliance with ordinance number two oh four, which is the campground ordinance.
All righty. Um, applicants, introductions, please.
I am Christina DuRose.
Yep, and Joe DuRose.
And your address, please.
Uh, two one zero two six State Highway twenty-two, Richmond, Minnesota.
All righty. Now, did you have anything you wanted to add to the report?
I can do, I mean, it probably seems a little interesting to be seeking permits for properties we already have permits for. Um, but I, a brief maybe like overview of how that came about. Fifteen years ago, when we purchased the first of those three cabins that are along our Fairborn Drive there, it was the interpretation of the county that, that was viewed as a resort expansion despite it being an existing structure. Um, so then it would, at the time, would've had to revamp the entire resort, which wasn't physically or financially or physically possible. Um, because obviously when resorts are developed, they're, uh, developed under current code. When county changes that, it can't just, not monopoly pieces, you can't just move them around. Um, so then, you know, this wasn't necessarily, uh, in agreement with other counties in the area. They didn't have that same distinction, so, but the, you guys were developing the IUP process for short-term rentals. I think we were the first or the second to acquire a short-term rental IUP. Um, and in subsequent years, with the remaining two properties, that was, we were given that same interpretation of, no, this would be viewed as a resort expansion, so you have to go through the IUP process. Um, uh, obviously, as you guys know, these last two years, there's been, um, I won't say large, but a persistent group of, of, of county members that are county citizens seeking a ban on short-term rentals, um, in Stearns County. And I know you guys revised ordinances, I think. Hopefully, we're helped to that with my involvement at the resort in Hospitable, Minnesota. But now they've taken that fight to the township level and it's potentially rendered it difficult to get a permit here next year for these, these properties. So thankfully, Angie notified us that, well, now Stearns County has amended their interpretation of that. And if this, if it's an existing structure, we're not adding density to the lake. We're just acquiring a neighboring property. And the unique thing about these properties is they were part of the original resort. They're actually, if you look at the abstract, it still says Kurt's Family Resort, which is my grandfather's name. Um, he had to sell them off. We're just trying to acquire back what used to be part of the resort. Um, so that, it's kind of nostalgic in that sense to be able to do that. Um, so I would appreciate, um, you know, approval of, of this permit. It'd just make it easier for time, money, and resources for both ourselves and the county because, um, it was, it was getting to be a little bit of a hardship having three different set of standards because each year we've applied for an IUP. It's different conditions the county has kind of set on those. Um, so no, we're not expanding the resort. We're not adding density to anything. We're not adding a pedestrian bridge, like that one email said. It's just, um, kind of behind-the-scenes permitting process for what's already been permitted to us. So, based on the county's revised interpretation.
All right, thank you. Um, Commission members, questions, comments?
Is your name?
My name's Joe Sifti Rose.
I was gonna ask, is your name on the titles of the three parcels of land?
Yeah, they're all per, owned by the same entity that owns Riverside Resort, the same, owns the land. It's, our resorts, like, most of them are structured under a, a whole LLC that holds the land and then an operating company, Riverside Resort. But, yeah.
So, what happened then? The, the three structures were purchased by people?
Yeah, so my grandfather sold them off to individuals independently.
He sold, he sold the buildings, he didn't sell the land?
Yeah, he sold everything, the land and the buildings.
He did sell the land.
But still, the abstract still says Kurt's something on them, but...
Was the abstract updated?
I don't know.
Well, question for staff is, would this have to be a replant for that to be considered the resort's property?
Um, no, we wouldn't require replat. It's all under the same ownership now. Uh, the properties are, are owned by the same entity now. Um, so we wouldn't require it to be replatted. The CUP can apply to multiple parcels. So, yeah, they won't need to replat at this point.
Okay, thanks. Anything more? All righty. Um, we will open the public hearing here. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak and address this issue? No one online? Uh, we do have some correspondence though, don't we?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll just mention the email that I got and was shared with you guys and with the applicant. Um, from Andrew Whitecheck. He was concerned about the resort expanding across Highway twenty-two, um, which isn't part of the proposal. Um, and then also safety issues and disregard for the lakes from the vacationers, uh, and renters using the properties was another concern that he had. That's the only letter that I got.
All righty. Uh, motion on the public hearing then, please?
Move the calls to public hearing.
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, motion carries.
You're my second.
Uh, further discussion, gentlemen?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think this is much different than most of the short-term rentals that we've seen and the issues that carry with them. Um, Joe's right. I knew his grandmother, certainly knew his mom, or, and knew his mom and dad. And now him, I mean, there haven't been issues and it's an extension and some people might argue it is, but in my opinion, it isn't and very different than plopping a short-term rental in the middle of a, you know, entire residential area. So, I think it's a pretty straight-up deal.
Certainly, I, I agree. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, anyone else? Anything?
No, I think we're all in agreement about what Jeff's just said.
Sure, sure. All right, well, let's just move on to the findings of fact then. Um, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Chair?
Aye, yes, it is, under Ordinance four thirty-nine Sections four point eight, nine point nine, and ten point two point six C.
Thank you. Uh, number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan? Uh, list of applicable sections, please.
Future land use map, concentrated development. It, um, also, um...
Under business goals?
Yep. I got it turned upside down. Business goals, number, uh, three. Acknowledge tourism, economic value, and perspective contribution to the industry. Uh, probably be the strongest one.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Uh, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I guess it would. It has been a rental unit. We're just continuing to keep it a rental unit, so I guess if it was compatible, well... keep it a rental unit, so I guess if it was compatible before, it's still compatible.
Certainly, thank you. Uh, number four, how has the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
It's really not applicable at all.
Right. Uh, any other pertinent issues, uh, township or city input? Federal, state, local permits, anything like that, or environmental concerns we need to address or talk about?
None of that's applicable, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, let's move on to a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, I recommend the approval to the board, um, for the, uh, January 3rd meeting for approval.
I'll second that.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number three. Uh, number three is an interim use permit request for a solar farm. Uh, applicant is requesting an interim use permit to construct one megawatt solar energy system in the Ag 40 zoning district. The request is in accordance with Sections 4.18, 6.54, and 9.3.6 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439. Uh, this will be the second solar garden on this property. The applicant is requesting the interim use permit to be valid for 26 years. Uh, let's, uh, go with, uh, a roll call of members who visited the site, please. Ken, no? Mike? Yes, I did. Jeff?
Yes.
And Rich?
Yes, I did.
Alrighty, let's go with the review item then, please, Heidi?
Alright, so this would be the second, uh, one megawatt project on this property. The other one was permitted in March, um, and is currently under construction. Um, this is on Greystone Road, which is a township road. Um, this is not considered prime farmland where they're proposing it, there's no wetland, uh, within the project area. Um, they're proposing to surround it by an eight-foot deer-style wire fence. Um, they did provide a detailed visual impact analysis, um, with this application. No tree removals proposed. They'll need to establish ground cover over the site that meets the beneficial habitat standard. There will be a decommissioning escrow or letter of credit required. Surrounding area is owned agriculture 40, municipality, or industrial. The lease score for the project area was 30.85. Comprehensive plan says this is a transition area. Proposed conditions, um, the planning commission set a date that this would be valid until, they're requesting 26 years, so December 31st, 2048. A qualified engineer shall certify that the foundation and design of the solar panels is within accepted professional standards. Financial guarantee of $185,000, um, to ensure proper decommissioning. Um, establishing ground cover that meets the beneficial habitat standard, along with a financial guarantee to ensure that that's done. And then there will be a review and inspections every year until that is established. And then notifying environmental services of any changes to the project ownership and contact information, and the developer may, shall make the landowner aware of all of these conditions related to the interim use permit.
Alright, thank you, Heidi. Uh, applicant, introduce yourself, please.
Thank you, Commissioners, my name is Vince Robinson, I'm the owner and president of Development Services in Ivanhoe, Minnesota. And I believe online is, um, our Director of Renewable Development, Laura Brown. Laura, can you hear us? Okay, maybe we.
She's typing, yes I can, I see.
Looks like she might be muted.
Or she messaged.
Okay.
So she can hear us, and we can see you if she's commenting. Maybe that's all.
There we go.
Alright, there she is.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, so, um, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, thank you for considering our application. Um, while our office is in Ivanhoe, I happen to be a Stearns County native, having graduated from Kimball area a few short years ago. So, um, it's, uh, good to be able to do some development projects and add to the economic diverse, diversity of the county where I grew up as well. This, uh, particular piece of property that we're looking at, as Heidi indicated, is not prime farmland. It's on a dead-end township road, it's, uh, it's got very limited visual impact from this project as it's surrounded, uh, this particular parcel of ground is surrounded by trees almost entirely. There's a little bit of viewscape from one portion of the township road, but other than that, it's, um, pretty secluded back where it's at. Again, it's, it's not, it's marginal farm ground at best, as she said, the lease score is like 35 or 32, uh, so it's not prime farm ground. The Fraleys who own the property, their daughter is, uh, looking at taking over the family farm, and this would actually provide a really good, um, levelized income stream for the family while she moves to take over the farm ground. Uh, so in, in that way, they're looking at it as a, a good transitional use of the property as well. This is in a transitional zone, uh, and the use that we're, that we are, um, proposing uh, causes no strain on the infrastructure or the environment associated with the area. There are no wetlands, um, obviously, as was mentioned, we strive to do what we can to actually improve the environment, and we'll be doing the appropriate vegetative plantings, uh, and typically look at pollinator plantings for that purpose. So with that, I guess I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Certainly. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, part of this, forgive me, as you know, uh, Mr. Chairman members, part of this is just to lay the foundation for the record, of all the solar farms we have in Stearns County, this is, this is probably the best place that we have them, but there's still the panels and everything to deal with. So, uh, just for the record, uh, Vince, what I'd like you to do is, one, do you have any other developments in Stearns County, or is this the first one that you're doing?
This is the first one that we're doing in Stearns County.
And how many Vince, do you have in the state of Minnesota or anywhere?
Currently, we have, um, 10 under consideration, uh, however, only three of them have been through the interconnection agreement, uh, study process with Xcel Energy. So we have, we have two of them that have their interconnection agreement approved, and we've posted the deposit on those. Uh, one of them is in Renville County, and then this one in Stearns County. We have another one who's, another one that is going through the study process right now by Lafayette, Minnesota.
Uh, Mr. Chairman members, Angie and I talked today, and, uh, we, we have 50, or we, well, had, have 50 applications. 29 of them were completed, if I don't get this right, Angie, um, remind me. And 12 of them weren't because Xcel did not accept them or approve them before the permit ran out, 12 months. And the only reason I say that, again, I'm not, this isn't specific to your project, but that's my concern, is these projects that come in, apply, get permitted, they haven't thought out the long-term plan for 12 months, much less 26 years. And my concern is, and that's where we'll go now, is the disposal. I'm sure you've heard or listened to my concerns about this, is, uh, it says on page six in your, um, application, your, your, uh, I don't know what you call it, your formal application to the, uh, to the county, it says a number, uh, or, uh, item K, disposal of structures and foundations shall meet the provisions of Stearns County Solid Waste Ordinance. Do you know what that is, or I guess really what is that? Ordinance, you know, what, what are we following? Is that the foundation, like taking the cement out and stuff, or what do you think he's referring to? Or do you know what you're referring to?
There really is very little, uh, cement on site here, there's a, a pad that the transformers sit on. Other than that, these are obviously posts that are driven into the ground. Those posts are then, uh, removed from the ground and disposed of, those are all metal, and so they can be recycled. Um, the panels themselves, um, are like any other commercial development activity, we have to abide by whatever landfill requirements are in place at the time to dispose of those. So what the current, um, disposal ordinances are, may not be what the disposal ordinances are 26 years from now, as you've indicated. So, uh, again, we refer to, we will abide by whatever disposal ordinances you have, the county has in place, and, and I, I believe that referring to today's ordinances may not, uh, help us for what's going to happen 26 years from now. In addition, you do, uh, requiring a bond placement, um, to ensure that the funds are available for said disposal of, of these, um, panels. I, I, I believe, Commissioners, that there's more, um, requirements put on this type of development than there are on many other commercial types of development, where you have commercial structures that are built with insulation and all kinds of other things that aren't being asked to provide, um, advanced funding for their demolition down the road. Uh, and all of those structures have what would be considered hazardous and speculative, um, disposal with them, so.
Mr. Chairman, uh, on that page six, it says disposal of foundations, that's why I ask, what foundations?
Yes, it's, it's a very small pad foundation that goes under the transformer.
That's the foundation you're referring to. And then the paneling, um, again, uh, you, you don't have the pages numbered here, so I can't refer to them, but in the decommissioning section, uh, there's assumptions are used, the word assumptions is used quite a bit, and part of our obligation 26 years from now, I don't know that I'm going to be alive, or any of us, but we do have, I think, a fiduciary responsibility and environmental. What concerns me is all 50 farms aren't in, uh, in play. Uh, plus, by the way, Novel has the one right beside it. The reason the solar companies don't do them together is if they combine the two, if it was more than one megawatt, they'd have to go to the PUC, which are a whole different level of standards. And so what they do, which God bless them, they do one megawatt, and then another company comes in and does, this is, I think, the third or fourth time this has happened. So, again, it's not the worst place to have one, but don't kid ourselves, I mean, there are kind of positioning plays that are going on to kind of make this happen, and it's, my concern is at the end of whatever this is, or when the money goes south, which why, that's why 12 of these applications didn't get done, but what happens if that happens after a year or two or three of operations? That's why we have the cash escrow. It says how costs assume a maximum distance of 60 miles between the project. I've tried my damnedest to find who's going to recycle these, you can't landfill them, and there isn't a recycling facility 1,000 miles. And what I'm really afraid of is, these townships, it's going to become abandoned, yep, the 80, 186,000 is someplace, but these townships are going to be left with disposal, because when the money goes up, and again, I hope you're successful, I hope they're all successful, but if they aren't, who's going to clean them? At first, and there's only 2,800 panels, uh, at, most of these farms had like 7,000 panels, but why so few panels? Vince?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, I can address several issues that you've brought up, Commissioner. When you talk about how many are allowed on a parcel of property, this is dictated by Xcel Energy to have community solar gardens, so they limit the size of community solar gardens to one megawatt AC generation, and they do not allow developers to develop more than one megawatt or one, uh, project within one mile of the next project that they develop. So that is actually an Xcel Energy rule under their community solar garden guidelines. Um, if we were to go to the Public Utilities Commission, it would be outside of the, um, community solar garden activity, and it would be a, uh, more of a, uh, commercial agreement between Xcel Energy and the project owner for a, um, power purchase agreement directly with them. So it's outside the rules of the, of the, uh, community solar garden guidelines. One of the other things that you mentioned was disposal of these, again, uh, there is technologies that are coming on board all the time for what to do with the disposals of, of these items. As I've indicated, uh, you have many other things that you permit that also share those same disposal characteristics, uh, that get permitted. And, um, we all take leaps of faith that those things are going to find a future, um, you know, utilization or way of recycling and recovering those products, so. Uh, again, I'm sorry, I can't say what the future holds in that realm, I know that if we were to have to recycle them today, uh, yes, you're right, we would have to take them a ways away in order to make that happen. Again, that's our responsibility, that's why you have the deposit that you have on these.
And I, I would just like to add to that, um, decommissioning, uh, component, that some of the more specialized equipment does have a salvage value, the modules, the actual solar modules being, um, among them. Um, so, you know, the electrical equipment, um, you know, some of that monitoring, those monitoring items that might be positioned out in the field, those do have salvage value, um, either on a resale market or, you know, being put in a storehouse for future maintenance. When you're building a solar garden, and you have to maintain a solar garden, you want to use similar equipment. Um, so it's important to have your own, um, uh, back stock to, to handle your maintenance. So I, I just wanted to add that in.
Mr. Chairman, last question, uh, thank you for that. The last question is, the 2,800, 2,880 modules versus the average that we've seen, I think is close to 7,000. Why the difference?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, um, I'm not sure that I've seen any with 7,000, and maybe some of the older technologies had those, but these, this technology is, um, changing all the time, so there's getting to be, the panels themselves are, uh, larger in dimension, and, uh, they're more efficient. So these panels that we're proposing, I believe, Laura, these are 580 watts per panel?
I believe that's what will end up being installed.
Yes.
Yes.
So the older ones, some of them were 300, some of them were 350 watts per panel, so it all depends upon the size of the panel and the efficiency of each panel, as to how many watts they can put out to come up with one megawatt AC or approximately 1.5 megawatts DC, which is how they're rated. So when I say 580, that would be in DC, which is then converted to AC to go into the grid.
Which, Mr. Chairman, would make sense, and if they were smaller, doubling, you know, 300, you know, 3, 3,000 panels, if they were smaller, that would be 6,000 plus, so that's why maybe some of the old, the fir, the first, uh, industrial sites, solar industrial sites, were more panels.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, Commissioner, um, one of the things that's changed too, is that most of the first panels that you saw, most of the first projects that you saw installed were, um, fixed panels, so they just put them on a pole, they faced one direction. These are what's called bifacial, single-axle, um, tracking panels, so they'll tip to track the sun. And, um, that makes them more efficient at, at the same time, so it takes fewer of them to, to get the energy production, but also, um, you know, you have that many more panels on each rack as well, so. Less racking, uh, fewer panels.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this is a, a public hearing, if there's anyone from the public that wants to address this issue, please come forward. If you have any other one. Do you have any other ones online at all?
Did you happen to receive that letter, Heidi?
Yes, I did get that letter and we'll go through that next.
Okay, great.
Correspondence, please, Heidi.
Yes.
So we got one letter from the township which was shared with all of you already. They're requesting a few conditions be added. One regarding having a 911 sign at the site and then having the township review the field entrance and driveway, since that's coming onto a township road. And they're requesting that contact information be posted at the site and then that the local EMS has an entrance code or a lockbox in case there's an emergency that they need to be able to get inside that fence, the locked area. And then I did last night receive a letter from Fraley's. So I'll just read that now. "Sterns County Planning Commission and County Board Members, we are the landowners of the property where the proposed solar project would be constructed. We support solar development in our community and have another solar site that is being built with a different company. This land was selected because it was not being utilized for farmland by us and hosting a solar garden was a good chance for us to diversify our harvest. The solar project is not going to take away from our ag operations and we continue to farm our other extensive acreage. Solar projects are a good steady source of income that will support our ag business and also provide clean energy for our community. This solar project is a good short-term commitment for our family as our daughter's beginning to take over the operation. We hope the Planning Commission and County Board also see the economic and environmental benefits of solar gardens and approve the conditional use permit application. Sincerely, Julie and Eddie Fraley and Ray Fraley." And that's all that I have.
All right, thank you. A motion on the public hearing, please.
Move the calls to public hearing.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. Motion carries. I suppose I need to ask anyone opposed. Sorry. Further discussion, first, I would like to know if we've addressed any of those requests about the conditions that they wanted to add, like the driveway and things that we talked about there that you mentioned on the correspondence.
Sure, have we addressed any of them?
Yeah.
Well, we can add those all as conditions. And then when they apply for the construction site permit is when we would verify that that's all being met.
Mr. Chairman, Heidi, you want to add those individually or just as a group? The Wakefield Township, I think we should add them as conditions.
Yeah, either, either way, we can add that as four additional conditions. It's probably the cleanest way to do that.
Individually?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this would be number six, seven, eight.
So then we'd have nine conditions.
All right. Any more discussion, nothing? Let's go to the findings of facts then. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chairman, it is land use and zoning ordinance 439, sections 4.18, 6.54, 9.36, and 17.2250. I did that as a joke, there is, that last one there doesn't exist.
I was very confused.
I just want to keep it light.
All right, thank you. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan? I would mention that it's applicable to the clean energy policies in our agricultural sections. The site, number one, cites solar energy systems in a way that reduces conflict with adjacent land uses. And number two, to continue to require beneficial habitat ground cover on solar sites. Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chairman, as I said, I'm not a big solar, I'm not in favor of too many solars, which I think we've reached. However, this isn't a bad location, it's in a remote area, and certainly it fits with the Novel Energy one right beside it.
I agree, thank you. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
The cash.
Certainly. Number five, other issues, township or city input?
We got the township input.
Federal, state, and local permits involved? Environmental concerns are being addressed? Anything here with public health, safety, public service, anything?
Most of issues all being addressed hopefully by the conditions and wishful thinking for 26 years from now.
Certainly. With that then, I will look for a motion.
I would move that we approve with adding this four requests from the township. They will become items six, seven, eight, and nine under proposed conditions.
Thank you, Rich.
I'll second that.
And there's a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you.
Agenda item number four. To consider an interim use permit, request permitted by, submitted by Pamela Winter of Oakley, California, according to sections 4.18, 6.62, and 9.9.6A of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439. The request is to operate a vacation home rental located on Lot 1 and part of Lot 2 of Hasling's Edition lying at the corner of Osterpoint Road and Noss Lake Circle in section 28 of Wakefield Township. Property address is 16553 Osterpoint Road in Cold Spring. Let's see, Heidi, please, go ahead, review of the item?
Sure. So this one was reviewed by the Planning Commission in October and was tabled until Wakefield Township lifts their moratorium. Due to the language and the new standards that the county board adopted in October that are effective January 1st, the lot size requirement isn't grandfathered in unless the property is actually permitted prior to January 1st, not just applied for prior to January 1st. So in order for that to happen, we had to bring this application back for a decision prior to January 1st. Because with the new standards, this lot does not meet the new lot size requirements with the new standards that go into effect in January. So that's why we're back here today. Wakefield Township does still have their moratorium in place, they haven't made a decision yet. So. And then just to recap, they, this was an existing cabin that they've remodeled. Impervious lot coverage is met. They're proposing an occupancy of 12 people. The septic's been certified, they've submitted the water test. And that all met the state's standards. And then the proposed conditions are, the Planning Commission set a date or event upon which the IUP would expire. The applicant is requesting that it be valid until she retires. Maximum occupancy shall be 12 people. Applicants shall obtain a lodging license from Environmental Services prior to renting. A flow measurement device is required for the septic prior to issuing the lodging license and flow measurement readings and monitoring shall be recorded monthly. The licensee shall keep a report detailing the use of the home by recording the name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of all guests. Post a sign in letters no less than four inches in height stating swim at your own risk at the water edge or on the dock. One United States Coast Guard approved type 4 throwable personal flotation device shall be displayed and all local zoning requirements must be complied with prior to licensure.
All righty, applicant, please come forward, have a seat, introduce yourself.
Hi, so this is Pam, sorry, go ahead, Donna.
No, you go ahead, Pam.
I'm glad you can hear me. So this is Pamela Winter, I'm actually intended to be there in person, so my apologies. I've been at the airport for 24 hours now. So, but Donna is my property manager who can also represent.
Okay, go ahead, Donna.
This chair is rocky and I have a bad back. I got it. I'm Donna Pung, I'm the property manager.
And your address, please.
105 11th Avenue North in Cold Spring.
All righty, did either of you have anything to add at this point?
Well, you know, we've gone through it once before, but the, so it's really, my, obviously my issue is that there's still a moratorium, so I understand completely that I can't rent it until that moratorium is listed and I can't get the lodging license until then. You know, I started this project, it's my childhood home. Tried to get it back in the family and then it needed a, nothing had been done for 38 years. And so it obviously needed a lot of work, which I have spent the last two years doing. The problem with the license, when I first started the process last January to get the license, the second step and it requires that you indicate the size of the windows and the day they were installed. I couldn't move forward with that step two because I had no windows at the time because of the remodel. So I had to wait and with the supply chain issues, they did not actually arrive until May. And by that time, obviously, the moratorium wasn't placed. So, you know, I'm fine with all the conditions added. I mean, I'm fine with everything that Sterns is planning to adopt. I just can't obviously increase my lake frontage more than it is today. And I did supply a picture of the dock, so it's not at all a situation where they are close together and crowded, where it would be, you know, cause safety issues. And I did reach out to Wakefield, talk to both John Willenbring and Cyril Erkins at length about it. And neither have any issue with this being a rental property. They want to make sure that they're able to apply what Sterns is going to adopt consistently. But when I mentioned the concern about the shoreline, neither had an issue with that. So it's a timing thing, which is why I'm here again to ask to please get the IUP and then, and then I will wait until the township lifts the moratorium. Donna, if you wanted to add?
All right, thank you. No questions from anyone? We will open the public hearing there. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item, please come forward, speak up. We have some correspondence, Heidi?
Yep, so we received a letter from the township, from Wakefield Township for this. Basically just indicating that they're still reviewing what they want to do and that their moratorium is still in effect. And so that they asked that the Planning Commission recognize that Wakefield Township moratorium is still in effect and allow the township to continue the study it has taken over the last 10 months. So that, they just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then I had an email from Deborah Sorensen that she's not in agreement with having a property be a short-term vacation home rental and concerned with the amount of traffic past her home and that it would shift the quiet, single-family homes to something that would be more of a resort neighborhood. And that's all that I received.
All right, thank you. Motion on the public hearing, please.
Motion to close.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to close in a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? None, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, can you please also do the roll call of the members who visited the site?
Oh, certainly, sorry about that.
Thank you, that's okay.
Let's see, I'll start with Ken.
I was there the first time, I didn't go back again this time.
Sure, Mike?
Yep.
I was there. Jeff?
I was there last time.
And Rich?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Further discussion, questions, anyone? I think I had a question about the, about the open ended, when she retires? Kind of this date of when this would go to. We would need a more specific answer to that.
So, I mean, my intent, to be honest, was to retire in five years. However, this project has killed me, so I'm thinking it's probably more like seven. Because when I retire, I intend to be at a minimum a snowbird and stay there in the summers.
And you visit throughout the year, I mean, yes.
Yes. Yeah, so the intent is to have my family be able to leverage it because that is where we grew up, which is why, you know, a short term is important because I can't, if I rent it like long term, then we can't even use it.
Okay, so that's an answer without an answer. I need a specific, we would need to set a date, 12/31/28?
And we would set the date, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
No, we haven't run any that long the last, we've been running them only, what, two or three years?
That's why I'm asking.
Right. Plus, obviously, we don't know what we're, are we going to honor Wakefield Township's request? Or, so that might be a moot point, I'm not sure.
Okay, sure.
What does a new ordinance call for? Three, is it one year?
So the way the new ordinance is written, the first request, it can be valid for two years, second request is three years, third request is five years, as long as they're.
If you're looking for a number, I would think that would be two years, that would be consistent with what, if it were to be recommended.
Yes, right.
Well, she's willing to wait until everything is done before she gets her permits and starts whatever. That's pretty much saying, I'm going to wait till it's all over. And, but then she shouldn't get more than the two years.
Right.
Right.
Right. Well, where do we go to from there? Any other further discussion?
The tricky part is that, you know, she can wait. Again, it's the same thing that we dealt with last. None of us like being in this situation, us or them. I mean, it's a, it's not a very good situation to be in. It's changing, timing, timing is what it is. And this all kind of evolved and now we're at a point where we are. And all these townships that did moratoriums and all the townships now that are getting, if, as you read in the staff report, if we approve this, it'll be a different standard even though she'll wait. So that, that's that tricky part. It's, you know, what comes first, the egg or the chicken? It's not a good situation to be in, but clearly, my biggest concern is that we've told in our comprehensive plan, townships, we want to hear from you, we want your input, we want you to be engaged. Well, now they did do a moratorium, they are engaged, they are creating their own ordinance, they're working with the county to create, or did work with the county to create their ordinance. And now we're going to circumvent that. That, that's the problem, in my mind. Again, it's nothing against the property. I think they should have a right to come in through their normal process. But the timing of this, again, we're being specifically asked by one of the largest counties, largest townships not to approve it. I think Wakefield's the second largest township, or the largest, so.
So you're saying not to approve it due to the 1123 requirements?
Mr. Chairman.
Which this was applied for in 11, January of '22.
Are you asking the chair that, or are you asking me that?
I apologize, I'll ask the chair that question.
Do it, who has a question, answer for that then?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Pung, what was your question?
So that you're being asked by Wakefield Township not to approve this, is that due to the 1123 requirements? Since this was applied for in January of '22, why is Wakefield suggesting not to approve this?
Well, Wakefield, unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight because of some personal reasons. So I can't speak for why they're suggesting that, other than what their letter says or their email is.
And Mr. Chairman, conversations I've had with them is, is because when this, as these short-term rentals started becoming. And, Mr. Chairman, conversations I've had with them is, is because when this, a, as these short-term rentals started becoming more, more of a problem, then township started putting moratoriums on Munson, Wakefield, Main Prairie, Painesville, Sox Center, I might be missing one. So they were forced, I, I was hoping the county would do the moratorium and then everybody would have been on the same playing field.
Right.
I'm also, I was hoping that it would be one ordinance that they, everybody would adopt because otherwise you've got Munson Township on one side of the road, you've got Wakefield on the other side of the road. If they come up with different ordinances, their own, that are more stringent than the county, you could have one short-term rental on this side of the road under a different standard than this side of the road. So in order to prevent all that happening, Wakefield would like to have their time to finalize the ordinance, that they can come up with their own ordinance to piggyback potentially the county. It may be exactly like the county, but they haven't decided that yet. And until they do, they don't want a piecemeal, uh, short-term rental application. So they're saying, rather than just kind of having one here, one there, that they're just saying, let's wait, let's do it all at one time and then move forward. That's what the request is.
Regardless of when this was applied for.
Right. And again, the difficult part, Mr. Chairman, and everybody, you know, all of us and you and Ms. Winter, it's terrible timing. Yep, it, it, it's just terrible timing. We.
Quite unfortunate, yes.
Yep. But on the same token, we can't, you can't react to that. We can't react to that. It is what it is. And our, you know, uh, we, we, Sterns County has really done, or at least tried to, and we have to try harder to have an intergovernmental cooperation between townships and counties. And, and it's kind of like relying on each other and, and I think we would be hurting that relationship if we move forward when we're specifically being asked not to for that bigger goal. That it's, it's, it puts us in a bad situation.
It is a difficult situation. I think the, um, Wakefield still holds all the cards, right? I can't get a, a lodging permit without their permission. I can't rent it without their permission. So I'm, I mean, I, I just don't see the harm in with the, I mean, I understand. And like I said, I talked to John and Cyril about, about it. Um, I've got their opinions on it. Um, and yes, they want it to be consistent across, um, the different areas. But with the conditions that have been added, it is, everything except for the, um, the shoreline is being a, adopted and honored.
All right. Thank you. Um, I wanted to point out, uh, non-voting member, County Commissioner Joe Persky has arrived. Uh, do you have any comments or questions you want to add to this discussion?
I'm, I'm following along. Yeah. I'm curious about, uh, the position of the township in regards to lifting their moratorium. Have they taken action to lift that moratorium?
No.
Still be, my understanding would, would still be in place then.
Yeah. My understanding is that the moratorium would still be in place then if it hasn't been lifted. Is that correct?
Correct.
So what would be our position to override their moratorium? I, I don't think we can. Can we do that?
Mr. Commissioner, I think we need to respect the citizens of that township and the people that represent them, which is their township board. And, um, I did speak to one of the members of the township board and he said they were going to be discussing this next month. And I think, I'm not 100% sure on that, if that's the 12-month of their moratorium, but I think they are seriously going to be looking at removing it.
Okay. Um, however, but, but the way it is now, they, townships are allowed to be more restrictive. And if they are, are more restrictive, we don't have the authority to overrule that restriction, do we? That's my, that's my understanding.
But don't you think we should respect and honor their moratorium, let them govern at their level?
Well, that, that's what I'm saying is by statute, yeah, that, I would think that, that we.
We should honor that. All right. Should we move on to the finding of facts?
I, well, the only question I have left is, uh, when she, when they, when they first put in for the permit, was that before the moratorium was put in place?
Yeah. So the, the first step of the process was, um, completed in January before the moratorium was in place. It was, um, due to the, me replacing the windows in the house, I couldn't go to the next step until the windows were installed.
There's, 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 there's where I get uncomfortable, where they put in, you know, there's lots of circumstances that happened because of our pandemic and everything else.
Exactly, yeah.
I think this here falls into a different purview, kind of. They were, they, they were, uh, they were trying to get the permit.
Right. And, and to be honest, that, you know, from, I read the moratorium from Wakefield and the whole intent of it, and I talked with both John and Cyril, was to protect people's property values. Well, if you look at that property before I started this project and now, it's, it's only improved the neighborhood exponentially. And, and I get comments on it all the time. So, but that's, like I said, the supply chain issue, my, my windows were not installed. And, and then by the time I find they got them installed, the moratorium had been put in place.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna ask Heidi, what date was the application, the, the interim use application?
The interim use permit application was received September 14th of 2022.
Okay. And the moratorium for Wakefield was put on in February, February 3rd, 2022. Right.
So the, um, the, if you look at that, there's a five-step process. So the first process is reaching out to the county to make sure the property qualifies for short-term rental license, which was last January of 2022. And then I was sent the second step where you fill out the windows and that's where I hit the roadblock.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mike, you make a good point, uh, but it would be just like, uh, if there was a township that had an A80. Spring Hill Township, for example, had an A80 requirement, so you only could build one house on 80 acres. Well, uh, someone could have applied or tried to do something to build two homes on that A80, but they weren't allowed to do that. Well, eventually, Spring Hill Township changed it to A40, so today you could. However, at the time of the application, even though you applied to build two houses, you couldn't. I'm trying to make an example that, you're making a good point. However, when you, when someone would have applied to build two homes on 80 acres, they knew upfront they can't do that. And so months later or a year later, when Spring Hill changed that to A40, well, then you'd have to reapply and then you could build the two houses. But again, it's which comes first, as I said earlier, the chicken or the egg? So it, again, it puts us all in a situation, but clearly when the application was made, when it was legitimate, you know, when the windows were, when it was ready to move forward and when the moratorium uh, uh, went into effect, those are all moving parts, unfortunately.
Certainly. Certainly. Anything more? Have we closed the public hearing?
Yes.
Let's do it again, otherwise just.
Yeah, let's do that again.
Let's, no, we did it. Heidi said we did it.
I got it written down.
All right. Uh, let's move on to the findings of facts that, um, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Because of the moratorium, I would say it isn't.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county?
I think, again, somebody's got to say something, so I guess it's going to be me. But I'm not the only one that thinks this, but I'm the only one saying it, just try to move this on. Uh, it does not conform to Sterns County Comprehensive Plan. Uh, the rural business policy number one, Lake Shore Living. Uh, rural business policy number, uh, one, rural business should not alter, uh, the rural characteristic of the neighborhood. And again, I'm saying that because of the moratorium, technically it does not. And we're not supposed to create negative impacts to public health and general welfare of adjacent property owners. And again, because of the moratorium, by recommending approving this, we would be doing that. I'm not talking about a short-term rental. I'm talking about this short-term rental at this moment in Wakefield's situation. And the Lake Shore Living Policy Number Eight, uh, the project maintains the neighborhood residential character by promoting, uh, capable or compatible land uses, which this would not be, again, under the moratorium. And also, um, the interim use permit is not compatible with the present and future land uses. A rental is more intensive use of the surrounding properties, again, under this moratorium. Nobody else can do this right now. So again, Wakefield Township has a moratorium, uh, long-term commitment to intergovernmental cooperation of the planning commission, the county and them. It does unduly shift the burden to the township and they've said, don't recommend approval.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? I'm just gonna say no because there are no other ones in a close by to that. Uh, number four, how has the applicant demonstrated the standards and criteria stated the ordinance will be satisfied?
Well, if it was recommended for approval, the conditions would take care of that.
Right, right. Um, other issues pertinent to the matter? Uh, I would see we've already talked a lot about our township input and the moratorium, um, which also applies towards permits, uh, environmental concerns, public health and, health and safety, nothing like that? I would expect a, a motion then, gentlemen.
I don't know what you guys are gonna do next month when I'm not here. I'll make a motion, uh, to recommend, not, recommend not approving, uh, the requirement based on the moratorium and the facts that I laid out.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And thank you, Rich. Um, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
We'll have to do a roll call. I was an aye.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the motion is to recommend denial of the application.
Correct.
Just for the record.
Correct. Uh, Ken? Mike?
Nay.
Rich?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you. Uh, next order of business, item agenda number five is the minutes. Any corrections? Anyone?
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, approve minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the two things, one, uh, the county board approved the appointment process to stay the same. So the way the appointment process is, will continue. And we talked about doing the at-large and all that stuff that they were talking about. They, they approved to keep it the way it is.
For the, for the commissions, for the planning.
Yeah, for the, for the Board of Adjustment Commission. Joel can talk more to it. I, I was there, but he can talk more to it.
And Angie, uh, we are planning to have those people that are on their terms continue to finish out those terms, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Um, and so, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, Commissioner-elect, I believe then you'll be coming off the board.
Correct.
So then your, your position will be open to be filled.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm at, at large, uh, the way it sounds, Joe is going to continue as a liaison. We will decide that on January 3rd, but he'll continue. Uh, Jeff Mergan right now is the alternate. You know, I'll certainly be the alternate if that's what the board decides, but Joe would continue to be the liaison between the county board and the planning commission. So this is my last meeting and that's the last, the other point is Ken, I'd like to commend Ken for his years of service and this is his last meeting. Joe wasn't here. Bonnie, his wife, said that if there's balloons or cake, he won't ever talk to us again. So I did bring balloons with, if you want, if you want balloons.
I got a piece of cake in my pocket.
Oh, there you go. We got it covered.
Why am I not surprised? Well, we had, uh, Commissioner Mergan's retirement and I didn't have time to eat it, so I do have a piece of cake in my pocket.
Is there enough for everyone?
Okay. Um, before we adjourn, uh, again, I apologize for not, not being here at six. Uh, typically when we start at six o'clock, we have a large number of items. I just thought with four items, we, we're at regular time. I did make site visits to all those, uh, uh, sites. Uh, if I could quickly just get the vote on, on the items, just so I have a mind of how, you know, I would have supported as a board. So for example, the first one, um, uh, the Sox Center commercial, how did that one go, your vote?
We approved all three of the previous ones.
And, okay, that was unanimous? Okay, and I was good with that? And the second one was also unanimous and the, and the third one was as well? Okay, so I was comfortable with those.
You didn't even bring your, your sheets. You took mine now.
Oh, oh, well, you, you gave it to me.
Oh, I was putting them here.
This is your last meeting.
Cause you weren't here.
Okay.
All right. Is that it?
Is there any other issues?
It's a pleasure serving with you gentlemen and thank you for everything.
I think Ken should make the motion.
Yeah, typically that's.
Ceremonial.
Oh. Well, there's only one thing I'd like to say, though. I'd like, you know, I haven't missed a meeting and I'd like that when they get new people, they try to make all of the meetings instead of coming up with a lot of reasons. And I think the township or this county should push these people in this a little bit, but in the Board of Adjustments more, to take training because we've got a lot of people coming in that don't know what's going on and need to get, I took a lot of training the first years and now it hasn't been available the last few years because of different things. And that's the only thing I would push for, but otherwise I move to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you.